I think we're ready to start. So, thank you very much to everyone who is appearing today. We do have a couple of members who are online, Mr Scott Barrett and also Mr Mark Buttergig. But before we commence with questions and opening statements, I will need to ask each of our witnesses to state their name, the organisation they work for, and their position, and either swear an oath or take the affirmation, the words of which I understand are in front of you. And we might start with Ms Aikens.
Oh, Aikens, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kylie Aikens and I'm a parent peer hub leader at Plumtree Children's Services in Merrickville, Sydney. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Silvana Marmick, I'm the CEO of Plumtree Children's Services. And I swear that the evidence now that I'm about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Emily Casca, CEO of Playgroup New South Wales. And I swear that the evidence about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Ms Hester?
Yeah, I'm Ellen. I swear... I'm Ellen Hester from Playgroup New South Wales. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me and shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much. And before we start with questions, would either of you or any of you like to make an opening statement?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. As I said, I'm Silvana Marmick, CEO of Plumtree Children's Services. Thank you so much for the opportunity to contribute to this process and I acknowledge the traditional owners on which we're meeting today on their land. I'm here with Kylie Aikens. We are both parents of children with disability and bring lived experience to this inquiry. My son is now 35 years old and the entire career, my entire career, I have spent in early childhood intervention based on my experience with him. I'm also the CEO of the community organisation that I run. It's a not-for-profit child and family organisation that has supported children with disability or developmental delays for over 40 years. We are also an NDIS provider. But today I'll be focusing on how we build capacity for families of children with developmental delay and disabilities using peer-led approaches, in particular our approach called Now Next. Since 2015, we have delivered the Now Next Programme, which is a peer-led capacity building programme developed and co-designed by families for families. The programme equips parents to take the lead in their child's journey, building their skills in goal setting, decision-making and self-direction, increasing their hope, empowerment, wellbeing and goal achievement. It is delivered by trained parent-peer workers and paid parent-peer workers with lived experience and over 2,000 families internationally, including in Australia, have participated. Foundational supports like Now Next Programme are critical for parents of children who either have an NDIS package or do not have an NDIS package. Such programmes build the capability of parents, which in turn improves outcomes for children at a much lower cost than therapy. But as we have learned through our national evaluations, when such programmes are not free, parents will prioritise therapy for their child over building their own capability. In our evaluation of 1,008 families recently, in a period of 36 months, who participated in Now Next, they did not have NDIS funding. Many entered the programme with lower levels of hope, empowerment and wellbeing and were more likely to disengage compared to our benchmark. They were more vulnerable, that is. However, when they did participate, they made more significant progress than our benchmark, showing that programmes such as this work even when the families are overcoming incredible obstacles. We also know this approach is highly cost-effective. A cost-benefit analysis using a New Zealand government model found that the Now Next Programme delivered a return of up to $4.70 for every dollar invested, including positive returns to government. What this means is that peer-led programmes like Now Next, they offer real values, not only for families but also for government and the wider community. They are low-cost, but they are far-reaching and lasting in benefits, making them a smart investment for government. Peer-led programmes like this also grow the workforce, which is under pressure due to the NDIS and increased reliance on therapy. Through the Parents as Peer Leaders Project, for example, we supported 33 parents to become peer facilitators. Many are now working in the sector and leading in their communities, showing the untapped potential of parents as powerful contributors, not just as service users when given the right supports. We urge the committee to recognise the importance of peer-led, non-clinical foundational supports in enabling earlier access, greater equity and long-term service sustainability and system sustainability. If we want to strengthen outcomes and reduce demand for intensive services, we must invest in building the capability of parents and make these services to those parents free. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms Casca?
I'm actually going to go to Ellen first if that's okay.
Thank you for the opportunity to share... Thank you for the opportunity to share with you my story and why I'm so passionate about it. I am on the NDIS, however, my life is not defined by the NDIS. When I look back to my childhood, there was no NDIS. But that didn't mean that I didn't get services support back then. Much of the support for me and my family were for the state government. My DART syndrome means that I do need some additional supports. But that didn't mean that every person with DART syndrome has the same needs. We are people first, that cannot be forgotten in this inquiry. My mum is a speech pathologist and she supported me when I was young, lucky me. But every child who needs this should get it as early as possible. As a child, I would also join my mum at work with other young children and babies. I would see firsthand the huge impact on children in the early years. Research shows us, the earlier the better. I remember seeing baby sign and speech tips with parents learning together. I would help a lot as a mentor. I would show children how. All children have families, parents, siblings are just important to support. When I was young, my mum got peer support from other parents, meeting together, supporting each other and sharing each knowledge. I know from my experience and talking about my mum that place-based group services and supports are just impactful and just as needed as individual therapy. That's why I'm super proud at work at Playgroup New South Wales in our team of over 90 staff and 650 volunteers. We support whopping 74,000 children and their families from prenatal to school age across 99% of postcodes in New South Wales, making sure they get the very best start in life. We are not an NDIS provider. Each year, we run 26,000 playgroups and 2,000 peer support groups and parent capacity programmes. The best part is, they are all local and free. I am really proud to be a role model. What a great early intervention looks like through my lived experience without it. My life would take a very different path. I would be more disabled, not enabled. I had a very, very full and fun life. I have three jobs: at Playgroup New South Wales, at University of Sydney and the Sydney Swans Women's Team. Despite what people might jump to think, none of these are supported through the NDIS and I can do this myself. I can travel to them all myself. I have a boyfriend. I take certificate in health and fitness. I play netball and I have a great social life with my family and friends, just like my sisters. Soon, I would like to move out of home as my next adventure. I am a great example for the opportunity that this reform brings. Get it right early to five later. Perfect can't be the enemy of good. Playgroup New South Wales is a great example of financial supports in action, ready to go, place-based, soft entry point, child, family and community. My friends and I would have a disability, want to make political. I'd just like to see all children with a disability get the best start in life, like I do so. One day, I won't be the only person with an intellectual disability sitting here before Parliament on reforms that directly affects our lives. I sit at the table, it's great. But wouldn't it get to have people with an intellectual disability as members of Parliament too? Let's get it right early to five later. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ellen.
Thank you. And honestly, what can you add to Ellen's? And here, for me, to have a formidable colleague in Ellen, a woman with an intellectual disability here presenting in the House of the People and representing those voices. And I think Ellen, for us, has really nailed the essence of what this is about and I won't go into too much detail, but not all children with a disability need to go to the NDIS. And unfortunately, I think we're in a system at the moment where the construct is it's the NDIS or nothing. And for all best intentions, I think that's become more exclusionary. But so too, I think if we dig down to the layers of where we sit, not all children with a disability also need very individualised early childhood intervention. We see that every day in playgroups and in the great work that Plumtree and our partners and others do. So too, not every child with a disability needs targeted foundational supports. There are things in the community and the general space that we know that not every child with a disability needs to necessarily be an adult with that same disability or developmental delay if we can get some of those early interventions right. And the social model of disability will surely tell us that. And so too, in our own context, some of those biases is not every child with a disability needs to go to supported playgroups. We really proudly run 650 community playgroups each and every week, run by parents in those local communities. And they too need to be just as inclusive of and responsive to the needs of children with a disability, with a delay. Playgroups are absolutely one of the earliest place-based soft entry points that every child and family will access across New South Wales. Like Ellen said, we run 26,000 playgroups a year. We're in 99% of New South Wales' postcodes. And by and large, except for some community playgroups who need to pay the bills, we are free and we are there from the earliest point. And we do also reach in in the prenatal stages. And I think with playgroups, what's really unique, probably as opposed to many other models in the early years, is our co-participation model, the parent is there with the child. We absolutely love the work of ECCEC and other sectors, but they're there in that co-participation model with their peers. And that really, we think, is the power of playgroups and particularly the power of parent capacity building. But beyond playgroups, as our submission shows, we also run 2,000 peer-to-peer support groups through MyTime across New South Wales every year. And we also have a really dedicated parent capacity building hub. Now, also, many could probably argue that playgroups themselves, because of the evidence base that actually does sit behind them, are a parenting programme and parenting capacity. But there is no way I'm about to go out to families to say that because we want to maintain that local soft touch. And we think that foundational supports are such an opportunity to finally get this right for children in this state and across this country. Because we need health, disability and education to absolutely come together. And when we say children with a disability, I don't mean those with a diagnosis, particularly in these early years, for us, the first 2,000 days, particularly the first 1,000 days, disability, delay, just parents saying, "I'm not really sure. My child isn't keeping up. It shouldn't be a diagnostic test." And what we're also excited about is, to my earlier point, I think we can finally bridge this long-held gap between the NDIS or essentially nothing, which so many families tell us. And I think we all here know the why. I think we would really like to, and our submission focuses a lot on the how, not that I have all the solutions, because there are a lot of things and there are a lot of green shoots there to scale, obviously playgroups being one of them. We don't want foundational supports to be another system inserted within a system. The passion, the capability, the capacity is there. It's the resourcing and the investment that actually is needed. And in this, I think I caution as well, foundational supports, very passionate about it, but it cannot be NDIS 2.0. It cannot just be seen in the lens of the kids coming off the NDIS and that's who foundational supports is for. Because I think that would be a missed opportunity if it's just an off-ramp. But so too, it can't also be seen just through critical individual early intervention, which Silvana mentioned as well. It can't just be about diagnostic support and health-based therapies. Foundational supports have to meet the needs of all children who need assistance. And as a non-NDIS provider, we would argue in what we see, particularly in our integrated Aboriginal hubs across New South Wales and other areas, there are children out there who are the most vulnerable and marginalised, who aren't even getting any services and supports. And we need to start from them, not the lens of looking at who's coming off the NDIS. Very, very quickly, in terms of what's needed to make it work at a high level, the voice of children and families has to be at the centre, full stop. And I think there's a lot of improvement that we need to do there. We do really want a clear and shared definition and including not just what foundational supports are, but what are those interface points? Again, not just with the NDIS, but mainstream as well, because that's a bit missing at the moment. We do need a nationally consistent but locally responsive approach, absolutely. There needs to be fluidity and seamlessness for families and for us as providers. And I think if you take an example of a family that might need some really targeted, high-level, NDIS-based services, the family also needs peer support. They might also come to a supported playgroup and also want to go to a community playgroup. How are they going to traverse those systems? How many eligibility assessments are they going to have to go through? And for us as providers, how many different standards and accreditation processes are there going to be? And so that's a bit of a caution. I think also, probably from a government lens in this inquiry, and I saw the briefing paper, a really solid understanding, yes, of what's been delivered now, but where's the unmet need and demand? Because I can tell you absolutely, every single playgroup we have is high demand. We are not meeting the need. We could double tomorrow, without a doubt, absolutely. To the point where we've had to, in some of our playgroups, make parents register, which goes against the very ethos of playgroups. Because for some of them, and I know the Shadow Minister attended one, that's one where we have 120 families coming sometimes, mainly from a culturally and linguistically diverse background. And we can't cope with that sort of demand. The other part is also probably on the provider side, investing in quality providers and taking a more relational commissioning approach rather than the transactional model that we've all been under to date. And some more timing with some of that would be very appreciated because providers like Playgroup New South Wales, like Plumtree, like our valued partners, we need to be here to deliver them. And sustainability is needed now. It is at urgent point. For us as well, there must be a focus on place-based, community-led and peer-support models that really do link into primary and allied health. But primary and allied health can't be the first port of call. We do think that that soft entry point in community is important. Probably not surprisingly, yes, workforce development. But our lens on that too is the volunteer workforce. I have 650 volunteers, again, I could double that overnight, many of which are parents. And also, we want to see people with a disability, people like Ellen mentoring what this looks like in the early years. There must be a focus on outcomes. And I think we're all looking at, oh, just getting it implemented, but what will it look like when it's there? What's the data sharing, the outcomes reporting and having open data sets? And finally, we would love to see that foundational supports at both the state and federal levels has a clear agency leading it. I do absolutely love the collaborative approach and a clear minister that's driving this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can we just have that? We'll have all of that. If you could all do that, that would be wonderful.
Before I hand over to Deputy Chief of Questions, I just have one. And it follows basically your last statement around that collaboration. And we've seen a shift at a Commonwealth level, NDIS ministers now under health as opposed to the social service sector. We know governments aren't great working across different departments and agencies. How do we improve that collaboration, whether it's from a DCJ, education, health, but also more importantly with communities, so it is community-led and with NGOs and the service providers? What needs to be, I suppose, addressed? And that's to both of you.
Prior to the NDIS, there was an Aging Disability in Home Care service funded called the Early Childhood Intervention Coordination Project. Thirteen regions across Australia got $12,000 each to have a coordination function. Each of the government departments involved with interfacing with children and services who had developmental delay or disability received that funding. That group brought together everybody in that region, regardless of whether they were government or non-government. And the whole function of it was collaboration and coordination. Each committee had a little incentive of the $12,000 and that brought people around the table to brainstorm what was going to be locally suitable, responsive to local needs. We've lost that collaboration and coordination now. Things have become much more siloed with the NDIS and with governments in New South Wales pulling out of provision of services to children and families where there's a delay or disability to a very large extent.
Thank you. Ms Casca?
I think the only thing I would add, and absolutely here, because I remember that, also is the voices of children and families. And I think for too long, the sector sort of thinks that providers or services are on the other side of the equation to services and families. But we are the ones that they trust. And so I think utilising us and our networks and through the Child and Family Supports Alliance, which we're all members of, to make sure that we are hearing the voices of children and families and so too giving them the information. I would like to see, I think, as to my last recommendation, a single minister really start to take this on. I know the Cabinet Office, Health, Education, DCJ are coming together. And I did hear Anne Campbell and Gill speaking. But I think we would like, as a sector and probably as a family member myself, as a sibling of someone with a severe intellectual disability, who is the go-to, who's really championing and guiding this? Because across all those portfolios, I think we run the risk that this could just be quite far down the rung, because they obviously have so much else. So we really want to see it land somewhere.
I agree, Emily. And I think that with that former ECICP committee, parents were welcome to those groups. So there was a parent representative, Kate McNamara, whose daughter, Bridget Kelly, is an acclaimed artist who happens to have an extra chromosome. And she was the ECICP parent rep for many years. There's absolute value in bringing families and professionals together. The work of Plumtree since 2015 has been to really demonstrate that we really need to increase the level of involvement that parents have in co-design, in service co-design, within organisations, within programme development. Parents can offer so much, of course, children can as well. Our age is birth to eight, so that can sometimes be a challenge. But the parents themselves definitely have got so much to contribute to service design. And our evidence has been to show that it's not just an idea. We have shown that it is possible to identify, train, pay, support parent-peer workers within an early intervention organisation. And we feel that that model can be scaled up. And we feel that that model should be one where, like in the mental health service sector, you wouldn't be able to nowadays go to a mental health service and receive professional services without a person who has a lived experience of a mental health concern in that organisation. Why is it different to early childhood intervention? Wherever families land, through whatever door they enter, whether it's health, education, maternal-child and family health, as we heard this morning, wherever it is, parents should be employed as a parent-peer worker. There should be allies for parents to connect with wherever they enter through.
Thank you very much. Deputy Chair?
Thank you so much, for all of you for coming. And yes, Ms Casca, everything you said was everything that I had been thinking but unable to articulate. And I think it's just particularly around the needing to be relational, not just transactional, I think place-based, community-led. And this kind of what's become the norm towards this individualised, targeted support under the NDIS versus this, you know, playgroups and other community-led initiatives that really adopt that sort of social model of disability and are far more inclusive. And I would argue are going to have better results. Playgroup New South Wales, my understanding is that it's a... So it's a public... Public, it's community-run, family-run playgroups that you're supporting. But my understanding is that there's now some private players coming into playgroups or offering playgroups. Can you tell us about that? Is that true? And sort of who are the people offering those and how is that impacting on the work that you're doing?
There is. So we do both community and supportive playgroups. And we've been around for 50 years. And so we traverse a few levels, peak body for New South Wales, biggest community playgroup provider, not just in New South Wales but across the country. And then the supported playgroups have also increased in recent years. So we either provide them directly or we subcontract to our valued partners. And then on top of that, we're also the lead contractor for peer support through MyTime and ParentFascist. So we do all the things plus national research. Are we the only person in New South Wales that provides or contracts out playgroups? No. And do I want to be or should I be? No, that's a bit selfish. So where there are lots that pop up in church groups organically or through other organisations are running playgroups, do we think as a sector, and it's some work we've been doing, that we probably need to come together and better articulate the value of playgroups? Yes. So in August this year, we're launching the New South Wales Playgroup Collective to be that umbrella, but not necessarily the owner of it all. I haven't heard of too many private for-profit providers coming into that space. So I'd be keen to learn more if they are. But I do think where we need to come together better as a sector is to better articulate what the evidence base, what is this magic model of playgroups? And where do we sit when it comes to particularly marginalised and vulnerable people? And in this case, children with a disability. And what is it, we're doing some pilots as well, what is it in our model that really is that magic source for children with a disability? So Ropes Crossing in Sydney, great example, where we're parachuting in allied health. Because we are hearing from families, either they can't access all the format of that individualised therapy, not working for them. And it's not really building anyone's capacity, it's too transactional. And it's not a therapy session within a playgroup by any means. Much softer touch and benefits all in that group. So that's where we sit in the sector.
I'm hearing that there are some of these ECCEC players that normally would run sort of childcare, early learning centres, who are now offering a fee for play, playgroup. So that's why I sort of asked whether you'd been aware of that, because I thought that was quite an interesting development, but...
Yeah, interesting. I haven't heard of the fee component. We do know that either schools or EC providers will provide playgroups. And some of them we do partner with, with some caution. So we do co-locate with schools as community centres as part of New South Wales Government Start Strong funding. And that's been a really successful model. We find particularly sometimes for children with a disability, so they can have that leeway into school, get familiarity, so too the parents, they can meet the teachers and the principals beforehand. But by and large, is that the full model we're going for? No, that works for some communities, absolutely doesn't work for others. So too, we do work with a range of ECCEC providers and ECI disability providers that will also co-locate playgroups, again, because they are already trusted spaces or it does serve as a natural segue for those families. But I'd definitely like to hear if they are charging fees and using it as a commercial model, because that is absolutely a risk. And we wouldn't want to see it used as that, like a sales pipeline or a commercialised model, absolutely not. And also overall, it needs to be underpinned by evidence and best practice.
In terms of, I guess then, the funding and the way that playgroups are, I guess, the way that people are made aware of a playgroup in their local area, did it used to be different pre-NDIS to what it is now? How do you, I guess, how do people know that playgroups exist? And was it, I mean, I've heard, you know, we talked before about the funding... Sorry, I wrote it down and now I can't find it. The, you know, the potential funding for communities to come together, that $12,000. Is there anything like that now? How do people find out and what are we missing out from that we had previously?
Great question. I'll probably answer it in three parts. How are we funded? By every department known to man, federal and state, so it is very mixed. And I think, in part to my earlier point, playgroups aren't going to be the top macro policy priority in the disability department, health or education, yet we are so critical to them all and as well as communities. And that funding construct hasn't necessarily changed, it's always been fragmented for the playgroup sector. Pre-NDIS, how did people know about playgroups? Probably most importantly through maternal-child and family health nurses and probably a stronger connection to health. And is that still there? Absolutely. And we also, as Playgroup New South Wales, have a finder playgroup by postcode on our website. And now we've also probably introduced the other layer of a bit warmer support. I don't want families just putting in a postcode and going off to a playgroup. How can we help them understand, "You might need some peer support, we've got these webinars" and real wrap around the family? In terms of how has the NDIS impacted it, I would think that a couple of things that... I would think that a couple of things that, and I'll probably speak from my time with Down Synoe, New South Wales, we know of families in hospital who are being handed the NDIS booklet and being told, that's where you go now. So it's probably to my earlier point, that system, as well-intentioned as it is, has become exclusionary, and so families just go down that path and wait far too long than they should for their assessments and their eligibility. And if we're lucky, playgroups will pick up the pieces, as much as we're still doing all of the work that we're doing. But this inherent bias, I think, has definitely crept in. So to parallel to it, I don't know if it's as a result of the NDIS, we have seen the growth of the supported playgroup funding and programmes and agenda. And again, I get funding for those across a range of streams, federally and state. We would like to see that come back together, and it's probably, again, to my introductory point. And I'll be honest, probably something we've had to address in our own organisation, that if a parent of a child with a disability calls us, we don't just go, oh, great, you go to Play Connect Plus because you have a child with a disability. And so we're being really explicit in addressing our own bias. But again, we are seeing this split that, I would argue that community playgroups for parents of children with a disability are sort of seen as the lesser cousin, and that there is a preference for the supported playgroup model. So I don't know if that's because of the NDIS, but it's that same sort of bias that's coming in.
Thank you.
Can I also just, can I talk about my experience?
Please, yeah.
As a mother, my children are now 12 and 15. But at the time, when my son was first diagnosed, I was funnelled into a supported playgroup that had a multidisciplinary team, and I didn't know what I didn't know. So I was lost in that system, and I'd fallen through gaps. And that playgroup supported me, and then the rollout of the NDIS was coming, and that meant that playgroup was shut down very quickly, and I was left just in limbo. I was very, very lucky to have found a parent capacity building programme led by parents at Plumtree Children's Services with the Now Next Programme. And very quickly, I realised that what I'd been looking for was parent capacity building. I really, my whole family needed parent capacity building. It's not just the parent, it's all those people that are caring for the child. And Plumtree Children's Services were offering that through the Now Next Programme. It was funded, so I could do it for free. My husband and I both did it, and it was life-changing. It changed our whole lives, and I decided that I wanted to be a parent peer worker. And in that time, I came to Plumtree, I was trained, I became a family leader. That family leadership gave me skills that I could use in my everyday family life. I could also do that with other families, so I could support other families. And I went to other playgroups and I talked about peer leadership and the Now Next Programme. Because it was free at the time, we were able to, I was able to be offered to all families. I then got to be asked to be a part of the Parents as Peer Leaders project, and I was able then to train more family leaders and more facilitators of the Now Next Programme under that 36-month project. And in that time, I got to speak to 1,008 families that didn't have NDIS funding. And that really showed me how vulnerable those families are. Many of them could never access NDIS funding because they didn't fit the criteria, but they were left vulnerable and they didn't have supports in place. However, throughout the eight sessions of the programme, they got to build on their empowerment, on their goal attainment, on their wellbeing and on their hope. And we all need hope, and that was one of the biggest things that was created. And that was delivered originally face-to-face. We then through COVID got to go online, and because it became online, that meant we got to go across all of Australia to the most vulnerable groups of people. So I was speaking to people from every group in Australia, including, we had about 22% fathers come on board, which is a very high percentage of fathers. About 38% were cold families. We also had Indigenous First Nations people. But overall, I got to speak to some of the most remote communities that really were struggling and didn't have programmes like that. And building their capacity is very rewarding for me as a parent, but it also means I get to meet these families that are really needing this foundational support. And it was through playgroups that I first started.
Thank you, that's really valuable. Thank you. We'll go to Mr. De Adam.
I wanted to ask about Now Next. I see its funding ceased in 2024. It was initially funded under the ILC funding. It's been independently evaluated, you've got the cost benefit analysis. Why is it not continuing to be funded by the, through the ILC?
I think Emily raised it. I think it's a matter of commissioning and different systems turning over from state-funded services to nationally-funded services through the NDIS. Initially, we were funded through Aging and Disability in Home Care, then through a grant through New South Wales Premier and Cabinet. That was some, a very initial NDIS ILC funding, and then through an ILC funding in and of itself. So we have, as Emily said, with the programmes and playgroups that she runs, we have done what we have could in the last 10 years. Now Next is 10 years old today. It is an internationally recognised evidence-based programme, and we do have published peer-reviewed articles and are planning a randomised control trial. So the progress is continuing, but we have had funding ceased in June because the ILC up until now, NDIS ILC programme funds short-term programmes. We hope that that will change in the future, and we hope that the evidence and the experience that we have developed in Australia that is internationally world-leading will continue to be funded. Since July, we have, Plumtree is a small to medium not-for-profit organisation, we have fundraised to provide that. Kylie and a couple of other parent peer workers, we continue to employ them and we have to raise those funds ourselves. It is not an ideal situation. We feel like we have moved with that programme beyond a sort of initial stage. We feel like it is well and truly proven with a randomised control trial, we'll be able to compare parents with and without such capacity building efforts and what the impact on them is. But since then, what we have seen is even though we offer the programme to parents who have got NDIS funding and they could pay for the programme with their NDIS funding, they don't. And parents are in an untenable and unethical position. We are asking them to choose between services that they see that their child needs, that is often therapy, and parent capacity building for themselves. That is not an ethical decision to ask parents in this vulnerable situation to make. That is even just for parents of children who have NDIS. As Kylie said, our project, which targeted parents who didn't have NDIS funding, now we're sponsoring those families to carry on.
It seems, I mean, you've highlighted a broader issue around, you say it's not an ethical question, or it's not an appropriate question for parents to decide. The government's going to have to make the same decision ultimately about whether we allocate funds to allied health or to capacity building. I suppose, why is capacity building more of a priority than funding allied health? You know, we've heard about the difficulties around getting workforce, allied health workforce in rural and remote. You know, that's an expensive process, we're going to incentivise people to go out and provide those direct services. In the choice the government has to make, why would we prioritise capacity building over provision of those direct therapeutic services?
Firstly, as Emily said, thank you, it's an excellent question, not every parent and child will need therapy. Secondly, I liken the experience of family capacity building as not only being best for the child and family, parents are going to be their child's parent for at least 18 years. It is in the, it is in the long-term interests of families and of their child that we build the capability and understanding of the family. When my son was diagnosed with a disability, therapy was the easiest thing to tackle. Eat, drink, walk, talk. That was way easier than coming to terms with what it means to have a child who has a significant disability and will have that impairment for the rest of their life. How do you build a great life for that son or daughter? And I didn't want families to have to reinvent that will alone. Why do every parent have to reinvent and have to wait that whole 18 years to try to figure it out for themselves? Now Next programmes and other such programmes should be auspiced and developed and funded for free so that they're showing families how to get onto a metaphorical bridge. We want as parents, our children at age 18 to live a life of acceptance, hope and purpose. How do they get hit there? Three laneways. At the moment, we have one laneway, which is the services and professionally-led laneway. That is now through the NDIS, an autobahn, and you jump into your NDIS Lamborghini and you expect to travel along from birth to 18 years and expect that you're going to be able to build a good life for your child through the use of services. That is not reality. What I have found and what other families have found themselves and what the evidence says is we need two other laneways. We need a community laneway. We need parents to jump into the community laneway and into the parent peer-led and peer-led organisation laneway. At the moment, those two laneways are dusty, dirty, bumpy. Parents are not going to want to travel in them because it's hard. It is natural that parents will jump into the services laneway, but we know that staying in the services laneway is not how you're going to get your child to have an independent and inclusive life. Parents have to travel and navigate through those three laneways. They need to be paved well by government so that families can travel into them and stay in them when it's necessary and move into the other laneways when needed, rather than saying that therapy is the only thing and we have to have a service-led life. That's not the answer. And I can say that from my own parenting experience, but from the thousands of parents that I've supported through the Now Next Programme, but also through my career in the 35 years in early intervention.
You know, for myself as a family leader and, you know, being able to live this experience with other families, talking to thousands of families in my role over the last seven years, I know that parents want to be in the lead of their own family, that they want to be able to advocate effectively and know where to spend their time. Where should this time, I'm time poor, I'm busy, we need to make finances, where do we spend our time? And if we're building our own capacity, we can then ascertain what therapies we, our child really needs. We can be in that seat of control, supporting our child, and over time, our child will change, they will develop, and they may not need the therapies as they grow older. They might, those therapists might become redundant, but if we don't give parents capacity building and help them to advocate for that, then their child might always be in a system where they need care. So I see that it's empowering for parents, but it's also financially rewarding as a whole country that we can actually support families to build that at those early years. Now, we know some families are going to need to have NDIS support for their whole entire life, but it could reduce the amount of NDIS funding that they need for their child as well. So I see it financially viable to build capacity for families' capacity at the earliest point possible and to not make families have to choose. Because I know right now, if I had to choose, I got to do it for free, it was funded at the time, but if I got to choose, I would be thinking twice. Can we do this because my son needs this much of his funding? You know, families aren't getting a lot of funding a lot of the time, and these really vulnerable families, they're thinking that funding is the answer because they're being told that by a deficit-based model. And I would be able to go into a strengths-based model when I was building on my capacity. I learnt very quickly that the strengths-based model is going to give me the best outcomes for my child and for my family, and then I got to watch that do that with thousands of other families. And I see them today, we have been able to auspice to organisations that are peer-led, and that's been so encouraging. I get invited in to talk as a family leader with those organisations, and they're only growing right now. Peer, you know, that peer-to-peer connection and family leadership, that's growing, there is a demand by the families. They want to be able to be the ones leading and making those decisions, and they don't want to feel helpless anymore. You know, they want to be able to be taught how to fish rather than to ask to be fed.
I was just going to add, sorry, because I think it's a great question. The only other lens I want to add is like every single child needs healthy, confident, thriving adults in their lives, and something we're really conscious of too, is not all children, particularly children with a disability because of the over-representation, are with their parents. And so we also need to focus on the other adults that are in their lives, particularly foster carers who are often left off the agenda and building their capacity. But I understand government has budget constraints. I don't think, though, it's an either-or, capacity building or therapy, and I also don't think it's, you know, a nice to have capacity building or a really targeted early intervention. Both are early interventions. I would also argue that parent capacity building is a preventative and protective measure far more than therapy would ever be. And I think that around family preservation and some of those bigger issues, we're also trying to tackle, where we know kids with a disability are, again, overrepresented and shouldn't be. But also, I think, so to that point, yes, the budget constraint, but I think there's a better way to organise it, so it's not either-or in a budget context, but also to my earlier point, how we structure this system. I'd hate to see therapy in the NDIS stream, where it needs assessment and eligibility to get that. And then parents are just structurally, not even budget-wise, just having to choose, is it NDIS therapy for my son or a general or targeted foundational support of peer support for myself? They should be getting both parallel. And then I think the third part for me that it raises is who's helping parents and families and the adults in these situations make those decisions of which path they should take? Because at the moment, like I said, it generally has been in the hospital, newborn baby, here's the NDIS booklet for those more individualised therapies. And that's why I think getting this peer-led navigation support piece as well for families, meeting with other families who have worked that, walked that path and can actually tell you what it means and what the results were for them, is also important in who's helping making, helping families make those decisions, particularly for us. Child with a disability or not, we all know what it's like to have a baby in those early days. And if someone tells you your kid needs 100 hours of therapy a week, you're okay. Okay, you're the professional, and we need to look at that as well in this system.
Thank you. We have Mr. Scott Barrett online as well here, so a couple of questions.
Thank you. I just, the chat around the formal parent capacity building and the peer support's been great, I just wonder how that flows in and what's the importance of that informal community that you might have around parents with that shared lived experience? And I guess just to set up what I'm actually asking, what does that mean for people that might live in remote, more remote or rural areas, to follow on from the earlier metaphor that I love, that might not have access to some of those laneways?
So what I can say is we used to, we used to deliver the Now Next Programme before COVID mainly face-to-face and building family, community, building family leadership, building collective capacity is what we're trying to hear. We're trying to develop a ground-up approach to communities and families supporting one another, because professionals come and go, it's families that are with their child. And families have told us that the most that they learn is, it's wonderful hearing from professionals and getting support from professionals, but the information and support that they get from other parents who are in this situation, or in Kylie's example, paid family, peer workers, paid peer workers, those, the information they get from them is so vital. So creating those connections, whether they're in person or online, remote, when we shifted just before COVID to online to test whether or not we could get out to some of these rural and remote places and give access to such parent capacity building programmes to families who it would not be viable to set up a group like that in their local region, because perhaps they were the only person that lived in their area for a couple of hundred kilometres. What we did before we rolled out fully online was we looked at the evidence, compared it to our benchmark and demonstrated that it did not matter whether or not you were doing such programmes online or face-to-face. What really mattered was that you reduced the isolation by meeting other parents, how you met them, whether it was by phone, by meeting and talking with Kylie, or whether it was by joining an online group and talking and meeting with other parents who were in a similar situation yourself. What's important is that link that parents have to one another. They do that through playgroup, they do that when they're standing at the school gate, but for parents of children with disabilities, the barriers can be higher, and reaching out and meeting with somebody who understands what you're going through is what reduces the isolation.
And I think, Scott, for us, I think you've hit the nail on the head and what I said at the start, not every child with a disability or family needs a formal service or support, and that's where I think, again, we'll miss the mark with foundational supports if we do just see it as that. And with our community playgroups, which are funded through DSS federally, like they don't just happen, and we are doing some advocacy at the moment. That grant ends at the end of, at 30th of June next year, because a playgroup can be as simple as three parents getting together in their local community. I don't need to overlay a whole programme and training and education that they need to do, no. But what I do need to help them with, because of the way things are, is our backbone support, which is why Playgroup New South Wales started in the first place, is their insurances. They find it really hard to find venues. We have a very remote regional rural group of mums, they want to rotate the playgroup around three of their farms, because there's no community centre, there's no church anywhere near them. My insurer says, no way, Emily. Similarly, I've got some elders outside Wagga who want to convene a playgroup on country in a dried-out billabong to get that connection to culture and country. Again, my insurer's like, no way, Emily. And so we need to make sure that, I think that's where community playgroups come in. And at the moment, like I said, I've got one single stream of funding for that through the CAPS programme with DSS, but I'd love to talk to the state government, because at the moment, we run 650 of them across the state each and every week, but it takes a lot of backbone work to make them happen. And that, again, I'm relying on at the moment largely, parents in those communities to come to us and say, yeah, we've got together, we want to chat. But what we're probably not doing as well as we could, because the investment isn't there, is how do I go out and incubate and reach the really marginalised, really remote ones and support them to get together, have a yarn, share their stories and not overlay a model? Like I said, yes, playgroups are a parenting programme, capacity building programme, but I am not going out to say that. So I really think community playgroups really come to the fore in that respect, Scott. And yes, then we can dovetail them into more targeted supports, online supports and other.
Scott, just to reassure you also, in our last 36-month programme for families who do not have NDIS, we collect data for all of our programmes, pre and post, that our participants came from all over Australia in accordance with A... that um, our um, participants came from all over Australia in accordance with A B S data. So rest assured that we were able to reach families who lived in rural, remote and very remote areas according to the proportion that the population lives in those areas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just have one final question just around um, funding. Um, Plumtree, you indicated um, that you're now, I suppose, based on sort of philanthropic. Um, we've now heard that the foundational supports or the, the federal state agreements have been sort of pushed down, delayed. Um, what is the, um, I suppose, the current landscape for organisations that are no longer able to be funded through um, other uh, grants that were available? And what is a potential short-term solution to address that gap and avoid organisations going under?
I, I can speak of the programme that we're running. I mean, we're also as an organisation financially are very much struggling under the N D I S. But our organisation has invested ten years of government funds so far into the development of this innovative, novel and internationally recognised parent capacity building programme. So our board are committed, now organisation, our parent peer workers are committed to providing a bridge to when sort of reality and sense sort of hits and hopefully foundational supports is worked out. So we're trying on a shoestring to do what we can to keep the programme alive and out there in the public domain so that it does not get forgotten. There's too much money and research that's gone behind it to let programmes such as this to fall into array. Um, however, um, it would be a wonderful thing if the New South Wales Government could continue to bridge a gap um, through programmes such as Start Strong Pathways. Um, Start Strong Pathways has been extended on numerous occasions. It funds, as Emily has said, a variety of supported playgroups, toy libraries, all sorts of inclusion support. It's a tiny amount for the organisations that they're receiving, perhaps a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars. It's been extended for eighteen months till December twenty twenty-five. It's six months out from that extension end now. And um, parent capacity building initiative, webinars, parent calendar events, programmes, playgroups, et cetera. You know, all of that is in limbo right now because foundational supports um, has not been put into place. There needs to be a bridge somehow built between what is at least happening in this sort of scarcity mode right now and help us all make that bridge and that, um, you know, over to foundational supports when it's finally funded.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think some funding is needed and if I just reflect on us, we've got T E I that will know about, well, it ends in December, would like to know fairly soon. Um, Targeted Early Intervention through D C J, I've got Start Strong Pathways through New South Wales Department of Education. We've got Connected Beginnings through Federal Department of Education, all ending uh, end of December this year, not knowing. Very hard to maintain the very workforce that we need. And then it does feel like we're on a bit of a six-month cycle then. June thirty next year, I've got my time through D S S, that funding at this stage ends. And then our CAPS funding through D S S, that also ends. So it does feel like as an organisation, we're on this six months, like what are we recommissioning for today? What are we doing? I think the other issue is the timeliness of it. And I do understand, like it is this nexus, we are trying to bring together very fragmented programmes and I welcome it. We need to streamline this and someone needs to draw a line in the sand at some point, I get it. But for us as providers juggling that and sort of being thrown six or twelve months, if you're lucky, extensions, yes, welcome. The timing of it could be a bit better though, not finding out a week or two prior. Or in some cases, for some of our, probably the more federal programmes, we found out three months into the year in which it's meant to be occurring and we've had to carry that. Um, and at the scale for Playgroup New South Wales that we're carrying, that, that is significant. But also I think to my earlier point, stop just rolling over things. Because as Silvana said, we're on quite a few rollovers now, but there's been no quantification of demand and unmet need in that. And I think that's a concern that we're sort of taking, well, what it is now, we'll just, federal and state government will bundle it into our buckets and then that's, that'll be enough. Um, all of us have so much unmet need. I do think there needs to be some consideration, like with every big reform for a foundational supports transition fund. And some of that funding needs to work now and give us that sustainability funding now. Because we had it with the N D I S, we've had it with social sector coming out of COVID, I think that that's needed. Um, and I think also it comes into some of the definitions. It would be nice from the federal and state lens, even just at a high level, to understand what programmes are they thinking about putting in into this mix and maybe just a bit more of an implementation and timing roadmap so that we can plan ahead. Because it is really difficult at the moment for us all.
Well, thank you very much. I'm mindful that we have run over the time a little bit, but really appreciate um, your appearing, but also all the work that you do to support um, families and, and young people as well. And thank you particularly Ellen for um, coming here today. It is very important that we hear from people with lived experience, so it's great to hear from you today as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.